All right, we do have our minutes from our last meeting here on October 26, 2023, 7:00. Clerks prepared the minutes. Is there any questions, concerns, or issues with these minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the clerk.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented by the clerk.
Okay, this time I'd like to recognize Deputy Fire Chief David Farrell, who would like to report for his presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, and members of the board, for allowing us to take up a little bit of your time tonight. Like I started saying, Chief Plotz, I will be here today, he's retired and all of them, um, he wanted to see as your doors to personnel, but. Just let you know, we're here tonight to present commendations and show our appreciation. Sergeant Goldsmith, firefighter doctor, one of the community officers, recent, uh, recent class deputy of duty, their actions are obviously at 2023. I'd like to get them to come out this time, talk to the ladies here. These nine team members have pride in their profession, we're honored to recognize that effort is significant. The members we're going to recognize, along with the ones that are suited to be amongst you tonight, they show up day in and day out, a lot of first-class service and we're really using this on here. This is all my boss about supporting this board and assisting this staff.
So to give you the information on the call, we're presenting them with a commendation tonight for a life-saving commendation. And I'll read you what the plaque says. On August 5th, 2023, at 20:40 hours, Walker County 911 Communication Center dispatched Walker County Fire Rescue to a possible cardiac arrest in District 7. Dispatch further advised a subject was on the scene attempting to remove the patient from a vehicle and initiate CPR. Engine 7 responded with Sergeant Austin Goldsmith and firefighter Michael Doctory. Engine 7 arrived on scene, established command, and found an approximate 50-year-old male patient lying in the roadway with CPR initiated and being performed by a bystander. The crew rapidly assessed the patient and found he was not breathing, had no pulse, and continued CPR. Memorial Medic 11 and Walker County Sheriff's Deputy continued with CPR efforts while Engine 7's crew attached their automatic external defibrillator, the AED. The AED alerted a shock was advised. Following protocol, Sergeant Goldsmith delivered a shock from the AED. Personnel then continued compressions and ventilations. Upon reassessment, the patient had a return of spontaneous circulation and was starting to breathe on his own. The patient was then transported by ambulance for rapid transport to the closest appropriate hospital. Engine 7's crew assisted with patient care during transport. It can be said with a reasonable certainty, the immediate actions taken saved a life. As such, I am presenting you with a life safety commendation this night, this of November 2023. That's a great team effort because the dispatchers get that call first, and there are eyes and ears before they get there. They did a fantastic job initiating CPR on that. And I'm going to have Chief Plotz and Curtis Kriekmer come up. Chief Plotz is our Assistant Chief of VMS, Curtis Kriekmer is the Director of the 911 Center. And we're going to present them with these awards.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you. Ladies, thank you. I appreciate you guys. I appreciate you. Thank you, my man. I appreciate you.
Okay, and the next on our agenda, proclamation for Veterans Day. Proclamation by Walker County Board of Commissioners, Veterans Day 2023, whereas, seen in the dawn of the nation, veterans have defended our way of life with integrity, dedication, and distinction. And whereas there are approximately 700,000 veterans in Georgia who by their continued devotion to the highest ideas of citizenship constitute a foundation of both strength and progress in the state. And whereas over 3,800 Walker County residents devoted their talents to assist our county, our country, excuse me, our country through military service, according to the latest data from the United States Census Bureau. Whereas in 1952, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed the first Veterans Day proclamation and called on our nation to solidly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas and in the air and the foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom. And whereas we are proud to honor all the veterans for their service, sacrifice, and devotion, and wish to extend the appreciation of our citizens to those who have worn the uniform of the United States Armed Forces. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, on behalf of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November the 11th, 2023, to be observed as Veterans Day in Walker County, Georgia, in honor of our local veterans and in remembrance of those who devoted their lives to protect our freedoms. I call upon the citizens to extend their gratitude and unending support to our many heroes. In addition, I encourage our residents to participate in Operation Green Light this weekend. By shining a green light at your home, you can let your veterans know they are seen, supported, and appreciated. Signed and sealed the 9th day of November, 2023. But all of our veterans, please stand. All of our veterans, please stand. Thank you for your time. Okay, this time we have moved our public comments up. We will ask anyone that would like to speak. We'll recognize you one at a time, and we'll ask you to come up and speak your name for the record so they can hear you at home. And we need you to focus your comments on things that we can have an impact on here in Walker County. We can't fix all the national and international problems, but you're happy to speak on any topic you would desire. But we would ask you to stay within the five-minute guidelines and who we'd like to be first. Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Melissa Holsey, and tonight, the unfinished business, I think, before us that many of us are concerned about is the rezoning of the facility at Yanks for the purpose of a liquor store. And I think that I'm very hopeful, because I think there is a potential path forward that can resolve this situation. And I am hopeful because we're talking about alcohol. And I think we should proceed in a way that is diligent and taking all things into concern. So at this point, I plan to table all of my further comments or opposition to this until I hear what that proposal is, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holsey.
Who would like to be next? Yes, Chris, come on up, sir. Please state your name, sir.
I'm Chris Hart, Superior Court Judge here in the Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit. I wanted to come and just sort of address an issue we've been having, make sure all the commissioners are aware of the situation. I previously was the District Attorney in the Lookout Mountain Circuit. On March 14th of this year, Governor Kemp swore me in to replace Judge Van Pelt, who had retired the previous year. And let me kind of go over a little bit about how judges are paid, Superior Court Judges are paid in the state of Georgia. There's a state salary that every Superior Court Judge in the state is paid, it's exactly the same, it's set by statute. And then all of the 50 judicial circuits supplement that pay, or the counties add to that salary. Those vary from a low of $12,000 up to $80-something thousand in some of the metro counties. Here in the Lookout Mountain Circuit, we are 48th in the state. Only two circuits are lower than us. The reason I'm bringing this up is the other three counties in the judicial circuit began paying me the supplement as soon as I was sworn in. Walker County has yet to do so. I've brought this up several times and just want to make sure everybody is aware of the situation. Commissioner Whitfield and I have discussed, you know, the numbers were set years ago as to which percentage each county paid, and that those probably need to be updated. However, in the meantime, I still, you know, I've been, since day one, I had a three-day jury trial on my first day on the job. I think if you ask any member of the bar, they say I've been one of the harder-working judges we have. I'm scheduling court all the time, trying to clean up cases, move cases, and I would just like to be paid and like to be paid back from the time I started doing the job. And didn't, I just wanted to get that moving. In addition, you know, our circuit, Administrative Office of the Courts does a judicial workload study. They do every year, they assess all the cases and divide that by the number of judges. The judges in our circuit are in the top 10 of that study every year. We actually are in the pool that would qualify for a fifth judicial position by our workload per judge. And so we are some of the hardest-working judges in the state. When you compare some of the other jurisdictions around us, their numbers are well below us, and yet all of their judges are paid higher than ours. And in fact, right now, without Walker County's portion, I am the lowest-paid Superior Court Judge in the entire state of Georgia. There is a proposal the state has, because generally, judges in the state of Georgia are ranked eighth in population in the state, but we're 43rd in terms of judicial pay, and that includes district attorneys in that as well. And so there is a proposal to adjust that, that the state has, which will basically have the state take on the whole burden and eliminate county supplements altogether. And that is, I'm on the Legislative Committee for the judges, and we've been pushing, and I know some of you probably went to the legislative dinner, we heard Justice Bethel go over the proposal that's being presented after legislature asked for a salary study to study this issue because there's a great disparity. There are judges in, who again, have way less workload than we do here, that are making $80,000 more than the judges we have locally. We're not asking anybody to increase the supplement, I would just like to get my portion of it and get that started to be paid. And also, I've got a little bit of time left, and we'll have a further press release coming, but our judges here in the local circuit have just been awarded an Oprah Grant, a new part of it, which is over $1.4 million, to redo all the audiovisual systems in our courtroom. We're going to have a further press release, kind of going into more details on that next week, but that's some of the things that we're, we do here, you know, try and save the county money. We use video hearings all the time, even though it's actually more work for us as a judge to do it that way, there's a lot more things we've got to go through. That saves the county thousands upon thousands of dollars, not having to go to all prisons all over the state and bring folks back here for us to have a hearing, we do it remotely. And this system will also enhance our ability to do that. Does anybody have any questions?
Currently, I don't remember the number, and I know you and I have discussed this, but the judge's salary that's paid by the state across the entire state is how much?
There's, the statutory salary is $126.5, that, in the way that they've never amended that, it's actually more than that, they've added, when the governor increased all state salaries, $5,000, that's in there, but they never went back and amended the statute. And there was also a merit increase at one point, several years ago, of 2.25%. And there's a $6,000 supplement for if you have a accountability court, which we have two here, drug court and mental health court. I actually worked extensively in the mental health court, that requires a lot more effort on behalf of the judges. Judge House is here with me, runs our parental accountability court, and those are extra thing, one of the extra things you've got to do, you've got to go to a multi-day seminar every year. Otherwise, the county doesn't get the grant funds to support those. And every position on the accountability court team can be exempted except for the judge. Judges are required to go. So those are some of the extra duties, and it, again, it's not regularly a part of our courts, it takes extra time, which is why they added that supplement in there.
So, and I did attend that legislative dinner, and they did a phenomenal job explaining that legislation and what they're proposing. So on Superior Court Judges, they're looking at raising that salary from the $126.5 up to?
I don't have the exact number. It's based on a formula, that they're basing it off federal judges, district court judges, so that's the trial level. And then the state level would, the Georgia Supreme Court would be at a certain percentage, the Court of Appeals would be a little less, the statewide business court would be a little less, and then the Superior Court Judges would be a little less of that. But I don't, I don't know the exact number.
I'm trying to remember, it seemed like they threw out a number around 180 or something in that range.
And then they would eliminate all of the local supplements that would permit certain areas, based on cost of living, to have a slight increase.
So currently, the four counties in our, everybody understands, Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit, we collaboratively have paid historically $16,000. And so what you and I have been working through the last few days by email is the share of that, because it's been, I'm thinking, at least two censuses back.
May have been more than that, because it's, I don't even know that it's ever been addressed since it was originally passed, and that's been more than 30 years ago.
Yeah, so it didn't happen this last one, so it's probably been more than that. So the disparity is over this 10-year census cycle. Walker County is, would be paying $30,000 more, as I put in that email and give that math, which you agreed to and understood. So that's what we're working through, is to work with the other counties to get this balanced out. So the other counties that have grown larger than we have are paying the correct pro rata share.
Right.
And we've done that in some other things, but this one has just never surfaced.
We do that, well, as District Attorney, we, I did that, we did it every decennial census. Personally, I think the Fort County should have a memorandum of understanding, they would do that every 10 years, but that's, what I'm trying to get is, get my portion of it from Walker County coming in, because I've been doing the job for, you know, what, you know, eight months now, and it hadn't gotten Walker's portion of it.
Oh, so there is a amount that's set now that, that's supposed to be a supplement that's already in place that you're not receiving?
Correct.
What is that amount?
It's $573 and change, I believe, I don't remember the exact number.
But the adjusted amount was less than that.
Right, if we reconfigure for the current census, Walkers would go down, DAs would go down, Chautugas would go down, and Cattuses would go up.
I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is, is if there's already a number there, do we, I think we need to, what do we need to do to get him paid up to while we're negotiating? Because he doesn't, he's doing his job, so he needs to get his supplement.
And so we had that email Sunday or Monday, and I think, I think I emailed you on Sunday, you mailed me back on Monday, and you agreed with that, that number, so that's.
Right, those numbers look accurate according to the census, but also said, you know, it needs, it's not just me, but all the judges would be under the same thing. And I think what I said is, you know, I agree we need to do that, but it can't be just me, and it can't be just Walker County. It's got to be all four of them.
It's got to be all four counties.
Right, and I'm certainly, you know, I have a fairly good working relationship with the other commissioners, I'm certainly willing to help that, but I'd like to get my part of the pay coming from Walker County before I start making those.
We can get that kind of called up. How far behind are we?
Well, since he started, when he moved from DA to Superior Court Judge.
Which would have been March 14th, and while the governor, I kind of, that day was sort of split in half, I was DA and up till lunchtime, and judge in the afternoon, so March 15th.
About eight months.
Yes.
Okay, so we need to get, yeah, we need to get that.
Thank you for coming to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who else would like to speak tonight on any, on any topic? Okay. Please state your name, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name's Zach Chapman, just got a couple of questions for you. The county has a 200-some-odd-page comprehensive plan, correct? How long did the county work to put that comprehensive plan together?
Well, the comprehensive plan is a document that gets updated every five years, so.
The current one?
There was a base to work from, and so you make, you go back and review it and make revisions. And so that committee team that was put together had probably three or four meetings, and there was quite a bit of staff time put into that, and also assistance from the Regional Commission, because they kind of helped facilitate that process for all the counties in Northwest Georgia. So there was a lot of man-hours that went into that over a period of several months.
Okay, and the current one went into effect approximately?
Probably been about a year ago, probably been about a year ago.
And roughly, how much do we think we spent on this 200-some-odd-page document? Do we have any idea?
I don't think there was actually any checks cut outside of just staff time.
Staff time, okay, all right. Also, thank you for those, I'm just curious. Um, I see we've got a resolution, another resolution we're going to talk about tonight. So one of the big questions that's on the topic is, pointed out is liquor stores. So reading also this resolution that we're going to pass tonight, I believe, is that we're asking the state and the governor, and this board is urging the state for improved mental health services for the citizens of Georgia, also substance abuse disorders, if you read the resolution. Find it a little bit ironic that we're passing a resolution for substance abuse disorders, and we're going to potentially have a vote on putting liquor stores out in the rural parts of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak tonight?
Okay, Jill Bolson. Um, okay, so I was on my way over here, I am speaking against the liquor store at Yanks. But I was thinking on my way over here, what the process is, right? So somebody wants to open a liquor store, he would go through the liquor store board, correct? Like he just applies, y'all have opened it up, he applies. But the reason that he comes here is because he wants to put a liquor store in a zone that is not appropriate. So like this guy said, we have a comprehensive plan. We've been very thoughtful on, you know, what the plan for Walker County is, and, and my heart is for, you know, Chattanooga Valley and the Cove. And I think the comprehensive plan, you know, I'm, I'm here as a citizen, and we voted you guys in, and you have this amazing plan, and I'd rather spend my Thursday nights with my family, but I want to make sure that you guys follow through with the plan. So to me, you have this opportu, you know, you have this, this someone wanting to put in a liquor store, and you're going to say, um, why? You have spot zoning and, you know, the repercussions, like, you know, it's, it's not just like we say, it doesn't matter, or that there aren't these repercussions, when there are. And so like, what's the, to what greater good, right? So, um, you know, anytime like someone comes up here and they ask you to like, consider rezoning, you know, I watch some of the older videos, you know, a man was in an ag district, and he was wanting to build like his aunt a home to help take care of his mother, that's understandable. But here we are, we're going to put a commercial zone in an ag district for a liquor store, you know, and what's, to what end, to what greater good? Is this really, is this really the thing that we are going to, that we're going to go against our very thoughtful plan? Ag spot zoning, which is not a good idea, in an ag zone, in an area that Walker rocks, like we do have, you know, we're trying to pull people through the valley and up to Macklemore and through the Cove, preserve as much as we can, have people come to Walker County and to enjoy this. But for this situation, it doesn't make sense to me that we would go against the plan, again, for a liquor store. You know, we're a small rural community, and this doesn't, you know, seem like it benefits the citizen. You know, like, the, the, the risk and the reward don't seem like they, they add up on this one. I'm not against drinking, I'm not against, you know, applying for a liquor store, just put it in the appropriate area. This is, this is not that area. It's very rural. And so, again, by changing this, it just sends repercussions, so I just don't think like the reward outweighs the risk here for this one. So that would be my consideration for you guys.
Good. Thank you.
I want to address these comments. So I appreciate your comments, ma'am, and you're exactly right, we do have a comprehensive plan. We've just come out of a meeting discussing this with some, with some of your group here. And the comprehensive plan is pretty clear. The comprehensive plan calls for commercial and residential use in the crossroads community, and it also has a map that designates it. So, so all of the comprehensive plan, that's what it said. That, that's exactly what it says verbatim, and you can get a copy, and then you can go through the whole 250 pages, because I've gone through it pretty well myself. We, we hear the voices of the people, we've heard, we've heard what the, the worries and concerns are. And we've, like I said, we've had some good rhetoric and good conversation on some pathways and, and some things that we're looking at, being willing to adjust some, some ordinance and look at some things instead of having to do, and, and to make a correction. It's not spot zoning. Commercial boarding commercial is not spot zoning, in any definition of the way. So that's not, that's not a valid argument, it's not spot zoning. It's not, and when you say ag land district, well, this, we're talking about a community crossroad district that has been designated that way. So we, you know, we, we've done a lot of extensive research as well, because when people come and have concerns, we want to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's as well. So, so we have looked at and are talking about and are, and are going to work on a pathway that will allow the uses that the voters have voted in. The board didn't decide to have packaged liquor, that was on the ballot, and the citizens voted it two to one. So, um, but we, we understand that, we understand the concerns. We, we're very familiar with the community, we, we grew up here as well. And so, and we work hard to keep the, the quality of life that we enjoy here as well, you know. I have children and grandchildren here myself. So I, I just wanted to state that, yes, we do have a comprehensive plan, Zach, and we do plan to follow it. Now, if we followed it to the letter of the law, we would, we would, we would do an immediate, we could do a rezone and put the proper zoning in that, that commercial crossroads community. And the proper zoning, actually, the land uses that, that are listed are number one, commercial, number two, residential, and number three, public institutional, such as a school, or even a fire station, or something like that. But we have heard your voices, and we, like I said, we, we hear what you're asking, and we're going to make some adjustments to try to accommodate and to protect. We, we all, we all have agricultural practices ourselves, and there's not anybody that protects it any more than we do. So we appreciate your passion, and just would ask that you give us an opportunity to review now what we've, what we have, and see what, what options we have in adjusting it so that the will of the people can be served, which the vote has been cast two years ago. The rule, the, the comprehensive plan has been vetted through the Georgia Soil and Water, through the Department of Community Affairs who requires it. So just, just to ease your mind, we, you can bet, we're going to follow, we're going to work as hard as we can to stay within these guidelines of this comprehensive plan. To have to, and so you've got a neighborhood commercial and commercial, well, if we rezone it, that's, that's commercial and commercial, that's not a spot zone in any stretch of the imagination. So I just, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Appreciate the passion, appreciate all the input from everybody that's spoken, or anybody that chooses to speak. And I, and I appreciate Ms. Holsey with, with her comment stating that we have had some very good conversation, and we're going to move forward with doing what we said we'll do, and we ask that you do the same, okay? Give us an opportunity, all right? That, that's what I have to say.
Okay.
Now, if anybody else has any comments, you know, that's, that's fine, I just wanted to address it while it had been mentioned twice, I wanted to go ahead and address that.
See anyone else that'd like to come speak that hasn't already spoken? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move forward on our agenda. And so after our public comments, the next item we have is our unfinished business.
I'd like to speak on that, please, sir.
Okay, which is a request, a rezone from C-in commercial neighborhood to a C-one commercial for property located.
So just, just to ease your mind, we, you can bet we're going to follow, we're going to work as hard as we can to stay within these guidelines of this comprehensive plan. To, to have to, and so you've got a neighborhood commercial and commercial, well, if we rezone it, that's, that's commercial and commercial, that's not a spot zone in any stretch of the imagination. So I just, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Appreciate the passion, appreciate all the input from everybody that's spoken or anybody that chooses to speak. And I, and I appreciate Ms. Halsey with, with her comment stating that we have had some very good conversation and we're going to move forward with doing what we said we'll do, we ask that you do the same, okay? Give us an opportunity, all right? That's what I have to say.
Okay.
Now, if anybody else has any comments, you know, that's, that's fine, I just wanted to address it while it had been mentioned twice, I wanted to go ahead and address that.
See what else would like to come speak that hasn't already spoken? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move forward on our agenda. And so after our public comments, the next item we have is our unfinished business.
I'd like to speak on that, please, sir.
Okay, which is a request, a rezone from C in Commercial Neighborhood to a C one Commercial for property located at 9180 West Highway 136, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707, tax mapping parcel number zero dash two five six dash zero two nine. Commissioner Askew, you have the floor.
As this does fall in the corner of District Two, which I serve as the District Two Commissioner, and it is in my district, it's kind of funny how it juts out there, but it is District Two. So I, I do want to speak on it and I'm going to recommend to this board after our meeting and conversation, I feel like we made some really good headway. I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend to this board that we table this one, one time. This is gonna, this is, we're gonna be able to get this done, but we're gonna table this, we're gonna adjust our ordinance. And then we're gonna come back when we get that ordinance adjusted and put in place, which we'll have to do advertising, we have to do, to public advertisements, it takes a few days to do this. We will get that in place and then we will move forward. So I'm going to make the motion that we don't hear this tonight, that we table it until we can adjust some verbiage in our ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Askew to table the current action item on the rezone. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. So do we have any further discussion of the board on this action item to be tabled? Hearing none, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries to table. Okay, under new business, we have Resolution R zero dash forty eight dash twenty three, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to urge the governor and the General Assembly of Georgia to continue efforts to reform and improve mental health services for the citizens of Georgia, whereas being the constitutional level of government closest to their constituents. Georgia counties are on the front line of responding to mental health issues within the community as well as a development of mental health reform efforts. And whereas the Walker County Board of Commissioners Board supports efforts designed to provide every citizen in need to have accessible, affordable, and adequate mental health services. And whereas the board is grateful for the efforts of the Georgia executive, legislative, and judicial branches in working towards mental health reform in recent years, such as the passage of House Bill 1013 in 2022 and introduce, introduction of House Bill 520 in 2023. Chief Judge Boggs worked on jail diversion initiatives and Governor Kemp's commitment to expanding mental health resources in schools for children and young adults. And whereas despite the, excuse me, despite the prior steps and success, the board recognizes that there are still a tremendous amount of work for the citizens of Walker County and other citizens across the state to receive adequate healthcare for mental health and substance abuse disorders. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Walker County Government, reaffirms its commitment to reforming and improving mental health services for its citizens and all the citizens of Georgia. Be it further resolved that the board specifically urges the governor and the General Assembly to continue efforts in the 2024 session of the General Assembly to enhance access to vital mental health services, including the provisions and state budgetary funding for additional behavioral health crisis centers across the state, additional co-responder units, and other resources to assist those with mental health and substance abuse disorder. Be it further resolved that the clerk of the board is hereby directed to provide an executed copy of this resolution to each member of the Walker County delegation, to the Georgia Senate and Georgia House of Representatives, and to the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, so resolved and adopted the ninth day of 2023. This was made by request by our Association of County Commissioners and they are asking all 159 counties to adopt this resolution in support, as worded there, for additional funding for mental health and addiction services. So do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this resolution is passed and will be forwarded to our legislative delegation. Okay, the next item we have is an application for a cell tower permit of Tower Company 2013 LLC. There's quite a bit of information here in this package. This would be, my understanding, for a cell tower with, I believe it's Verizon over in the Immerchi Valley area. Oh, I'm sorry, I did, yes, I'm sorry, I even wrote that in. All right, let me back up one, thank you, Brian, I missed that. So we got to do the resolution on the burn ban. Resolution R dash zero forty nine dash twenty three, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to ratify an executive order initiating a 45-day ban, burn ban in Walker County, whereas the chairman of the Walker County Board of Commissioners and Walker County Fire Chief, Walker County Emergency Management Director have determined that the drought conditions exist within the county. And whereas these extremely dry conditions pose the threat of a large dangerous wildfires as well as create an environment for residential debris burns to escape and spread out of control. Whereas such fires have the potential of endangering lives and damaging property on a large scale. And whereas wildfires presently exist within the county as well as nearby counties and the threat of fire danger remains high. And whereas the chairman enacted Executive Order 2023 dash oh one on November the 4th, 2023, establishing a 45-day ban on all outdoor burning, including but not limited to small piles of natural vegetation, yard debris, and campfires in Walker County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Walker County Government, ratifies the Executive Order 2023 dash one and confirms it shall remain in effect until 4:59 PM Eastern Standard Time on Tuesday, December the 19th, 2023, at which time the suspension, any laws and rules and any other provisions of the order shall cease and be no further force or effort. So resolved and adopted the ninth date of November 2023. Several counties around us have also done this, Deke County was probably the first one. This past Saturday, I did reach out to each one of the board members individually, make sure they were supportive of this, everyone was very supportive of this due to the conditions. So just to have this on the record and to make this further public and also to get this into the minutes of our, of our documentation, we drafted this resolution just to ratify the attached executive order. Is there any questions, concerns, or comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this Resolution R forty nine dash twenty three?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes. Tousa County also enacted a burn ban today as well. Okay, now, back on order here, this is an application for a cell tower. All cell tower approvals do come to the Board of Commissioners. This tower is to be located over in the Immerchi Valley and I'm pretty positive this would be for Verizon service, but there may be other carriers that also hang equipment on this tower at 3033 Highway 201, Lafette, Georgia, in the Villanau community. Is there any questions, concerns, or comments from the board on this request?
That's not actually the address of the tower. Could David Boll and I looked into this with the Historic Preservation Commission to make sure it didn't sit on land and we got to looking for it. I think that's the address of the, of the owners of the property.
Okay.
The property is on 136 across from Fort Bela now, if you know where that is.
Yes.
So it's up on a hill there.
Okay, that makes sense.
And you, you, Brian, you told me earlier, you gone up and actually surveyed the site yourself, looked at it and feel like it's in.
Yeah, I think it's a good location.
We need a cell tower over there as bad as we need one anywhere.
We do, and if there is such thing, it is a good location, it's up on a hill, it should reach a long way and, you know, it'd help the people that live there and the EMS services and the sheriffs, you know. That's why when y'all call me, I have to get on a hill to call you back.
Is that what takes?
That's true.
So this has been processed through our planning department and has been reviewed by them and every, everything seems to be in good order. Again, it does require in our policy, or in our ordinance is that the board to approve any cell towers being located into the county. Any further discussion of the board? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the cell tower application? We can't take any questions at this time, thank you. Okay. Any further discussion of the board?
No, sir, I'm good, motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries for approval. Okay. All right, we do have our monthly statistics for October that we print out every month. Again, I won't read every one of these to, to bore you, the information's here and in good order. Our animal shelter took in 63 dogs and 25 cats. We were able to outtake 49 dogs and 15 cats, but we do have a lot of animals in inventory if anybody wants to adopt an animal, we've got a big selection. You can find those on our website and actually see the photos and a little information about those. Talking about fire services, our fire department responded to 564 calls, many of those being medical related, but they did respond to 564 calls. They did install 12 smoke detectors, which was great. Also, new family home construction, there was 20 new home construction permits pulled in the unincorporated area that gets us to 324 for the year. So you can see the history there back to 2018, that's pretty much double plus over any other year that we've had in the most recent years here. We still are patching potholes, trying to get all of them sealed before the hard winter comes. So if you know of potholes, please let us know, but there's 703 potholes patched in the, the month of October as well. So next item on our agenda would be an executive session, is there a need for an executive session?
Commissioner comments?
Okay, man, I'm just having a hard time tonight. Sorry about that. Commissioner comments, Mr. Pluton?
Just appreciate everybody coming out and getting involved. We do hear you and try to go off of what y'all want to make the best informed decision we can. I would like to yield the rest of my time to our Public Works Director, Carlin Bowers, to come up and kind of explain how the roads are picked and who picks them and how we do that.
For the pavement?
Pavement, yes, yes.
Carlin Bowers, come forward, please.
All right. Kind of caught me on the spot here, but it's fairly simple, how far back you want to go. So been here for about 17, 18 years now, not too many roads in the county I haven't been on. The very first thing that Shannon had done, or had done, we had Paragon do a assessment on every road in this county. So in that assessment, that's probably, if I remember right, about 120 pages. Once it's all spread out, bunch of numbers, a lot of analytics, then they are graded. And you can go down through there, find the worst to the halfway decent. At that time, we didn't have a whole lot of paving at all going on for many years up until that administration change. So in going through some of that, 90% of the worst of the worst are dead-end, single-lane roads with maybe five to, at the most, 10 residents on them that would cost enormous amounts of money to get those up to, I mean, just passable roads. They are passable, I shouldn't say impassable, we got two that are, but we can get into that later. When I go through, one of the things that I've been looking at in the last six years of our T-Spot spending on asphalt is population on a street, the number of vehicles that use it, main furor throes, the age of some of our main furor throes. First thing we needed to do was get all of our main furor throes taken care of first. They've just not seen any asphalt in a long time. Slowly but surely, we've got a lot of those done. There's one or two second phases now that T-Spot has passed. Thank you for everybody that voted for that, greatly appreciated. Every dime of that money goes into asphalt and it's all accounted for. So that, those are some of the things that I look for, main furor throes, how many people in the county use these particular roads, number of residents on them, and age and condition. We are, I feel like we're starting to get into a situation, I would say maybe in another two years, where we could start breaking off and doing a lot of these dead-end, single-lane stuff, subdivisions. There's a handful of subdivisions that, yes, we have done. Logistically, it made sense. Asphalt's not going to do nothing but go up, that's the bottom line. Every day, something's increasing in that world. Logistically, it makes sense to take care of some of this stuff while we're doing some of the main roads near them. I, I mean, it's, if we went on call volume on a road, you pick a road that everybody calls on every single road they live on. I mean, it's, that's pretty much how we, how we've kind of went through that. I go through, get a list together, kind of judge that by asphalt pricing, put that list together, I give it to chairman and the board and they had analyzed that and most of the time it gets handed back and we put together a scope of work and then put it out for bid. So that's kind of how that, how that goes.
Carlin, you mentioned, like you talked about how, when you're, when you're in certain areas, you know, it makes sense to, I think, and I think you've told me this before, but I wanted to touch on it so people would understand. A lot of that has to do with mobilization and moving that big equipment from point A to point B and the, and the time that's, and the, and the cost involved in that. So when we're in certain areas, it's, sometimes people would question, well, why are you getting, why are you doing that while you're there? But the mobilization to come back and catch it next time would cost us double the money.
Right.
So a lot of it has to do with where we are at that time and where we're headed, right?
One of the things that I feel that these contractors look at, we typically get about, there's about five big contractors that look at our list of roads because we do have big projects. One of the things that they look at is how many times they're going to have to load that paver up. And, and it's not only the pavers, the roller, we're, we're milling, we're doing quite a bit of milling. So that, that's, that's a move in itself. That goes into the cost per ton that they give us, is how many times they're going to have to move a piece of equipment. I try to keep this stuff in areas so they can go to an area, do it, and they try, they track their machine around in those particular areas. Then load it up one time, move to another area. Our current contractors, they're fortunate enough to have sometimes two crews. Trucking, trucking's always a big issue, takes a lot to get all of that lined up. Some roads may only require 15 trucks, some of our bigger roads may need 35 or 40. They, I mean, that's, they've just got to get, that's, that's on their side of things and, I mean, that's, that plays a lot into the cost and stuff as well and how we pick some of this.
Also, I'd like to add to your comments, good, good points there, but some additional things that we collaborate on and do is we also reach out to our local cities and adjoining counties to see what road projects they're doing because the last thing we want to do is pave a county road and stop at the city limits because then it makes it look bad on the city or vice versa. Also, we try to work with neighboring counties the same way.
And utilities, we, there's water projects, we've got seven, seven different water companies, seven or eight?
Nine.
We got nine different water companies in this county. At some point or another, they're all seeing, they all, nine of them seem to be doing something and it's hard to keep up with, but try to follow them and some of their projected projects. It, it doesn't make any sense. And some of their projected projects, it doesn't make any sense to pave them and then know that they're coming in within a year or two to put in a new water, or whatever the case is. So that goes into play whenever we're picking these roads.
Yeah, the other thing that we look at over and above utilities is also what other construction's going on in the area where there's a lot of heavy equipment on the road. So we have a couple of areas on the north side of Lafette and in the Noble Community. In one example, we did some paving this year, but there was a couple of roads that we purposely skipped because there are subdivisions being built that's under construction, where they're putting in their road system and their utilities, and so they've got a lot of heavy equipment going in, and so we didn't want to pave those and take a chance of causing more road damage. So there's quite a bit of factors that go into evaluating which roads to pave. We have approximately about 500 more miles to pave with T-Splash passing, that will make a tremendous impact, it will also help keep pressure off property taxes, but it gives us the ability to have that earmarked designated allocated funding that is for nothing but transportation improvement. In our case, the big number is the amount of roads that need to be paved. And also, we also look at and work with GDOT, some of you that, as an example, lived down on West Cove Road, and also the Hall Jaw area, and there's been different times that we've got some grants from the state on some of the smaller bridge replacements. There's about nine more bridges in queue to be replaced that they've already approved, and so we don't want to go and pave a road on a road that we know the bridge is going to be replaced. We want to let the bridge get replaced and then pave the road. Also, we have a couple of Colbert projects we're working on, one of those is up on Glentana that was getting really bad. You know, we didn't want to pave Glentana until we got that Colbert replaced. So there's a lot of little factors that go into the picking and choosing of those, but hopefully over about the next 10 years, we'll be able to get every road in this county paved. Any more questions?
I do have a question. What roads remain to be paved that we set up on the 2023 paving schedule?
See, they've got just a little bit more left. One more day on Salem, they're on Hogan currently. Old 27 is next. Then there you are, they've moved equipment to Halls Valley area now, so I would say, hoping by the end of next week, should start seeing some movement down there, but it may be the following week.
Okay.
But they have mobilized equipment down there already.
Good deal, thank you.
And then the Tate Road, we addressed some issues on Tate, we've done some base work there. Got that pretty smooth, shored up some. The Water Department, to my understanding, well, earlier this week, they were talking like they might have only a day or two days left for their line.
On that whole project, then?
On that whole, they went.
They've been moving fast.
Some really good digging over there where they're at. So I would just about bet they probably finished it this week. I just hadn't had a chance to get over there to check. We're done with our part, fairly certain water company's done with theirs after the Halls Valley area will be moving over to Villanow.
So weather permitting, you should get there, if it stays warm this year, then?
Right. If everything goes about like it is, I mean, I really like to see asphalt go down, but we need some rain. We need rain.
So that was the waterline extension of a couple of miles of waterline that the county helped, and so that's Ben Childs Road, Concord Road, and Tate Road, all over the Villanow Community that we had to pump the brakes a little bit to get the waterline in before we put the new asphalt down.
That's another one of those, it didn't make any sense to try to get over there and get that, knowing they're going to be in it with all their stuff, so.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Askew, Commissioner comments?
Yeah, I was kind of reflecting like with Commissioner Blakemore. It is, it's challenging sometimes, and we do all have, you know, we're very passionate about our thoughts, and we have different thoughts and different perceptions, but this is what we need to do to make things move forward, is hear from you and then take it back and then see what we can do to it. So I do want to thank each and every one that does show up, whether you're for or against a project, whatever, show up and let us know, and that helps us to better govern. So in anything that you need, if we can be of any assistance, like Robert always says, call, text, or email. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart.
Thank you, Mark, much appreciated. So I was coming to a meeting yesterday over this way, and I got stopped by in the road because they're putting that fiber in there now, which is good. People, you know, we got that grant from Windstream, that project is going on now, since that fiber is going up, probably not quick enough for some, but it is going in. And also, the signs we voted on like six years ago, I don't know if it goes along with that one, but those signs are now going up at our community centers. I think they'll have them all in by the end of November. Joe sent me an email, I think that's right, Joe, yes? He doesn't remember, I don't either, but I think by the end of November.
They're working at it.
That's good, yeah. And Saturday's Veterans Day, Shannon mentioned that in the proclamation, but there's a lot of events going on in the county tomorrow. I know at Risen House School they have their program in the morning, I know at Lafette House School they have their program in the morning at 8:30. There's a concert at the church on 27 North of Town, Saturday afternoon from 4 to 7. So if you're a veteran, know a veteran, tell them about it, because this community is good to our veterans, the Chairman's real good to recognize veterans, the county always has been, the city of Lafette has been, so, yeah, it's because of veterans we could have meetings like this and work with people. So, yeah, thanks to everybody who has served. Robert?
Thank you, sir. Just want to appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I want to say thank you to all of our county employees, appreciate the hard work you guys do, you do a wonderful job, and just certainly appreciate everything that you do. I want to reiterate, like Brian mentioned, just want to say thank you to our veterans, just appreciate all the veterans that are in our county, those who are in attendance tonight, and let's also remember those who have passed on, and certainly remember those who have paved the ultimate sacrifice for their country. We would not be able to do meetings like this and have a wonderful society if it was not for our veterans. Also, I would like to read a letter that was presented to the Board from the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission. It is from John Colpepper, the Chair, says, "Dear sirs, the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission would like to thank you for your support of the 160th Anniversary Battle of Chickamauga, battle reenactment held at the Walker County Business Park, September 21st through the 23rd. The event gave our citizens an opportunity to experience the reenactment of an important historical event that occurred in 1863 that helped shape the nation of today. In addition to the 2,400-plus registered reenactors representing 24 states, we know of reenactors from New Zealand, Austria, and Ireland that attended. We estimated 500 to 600 students participated in School Day on Friday, with 2,500 to 3,000 spectators attending the event Saturday and Sunday. We have received positive comments from the business community on the impact of the event had on their business. The commission worked with local Boy Scouts and the Chickamauga Lions Club on spectators' parking. The Scouts earned $703, Lions Club $320, and the commission $1,013 in parking fees. In addition, the Atlanta Campaign Incorporated donated $1,000 to the commission. All involved feel it was a very successful event, and the event staff doing an excellent job organizing and the management of the event." Again, thank you, John Colpepper, Chairman, Walker County Historic Preservation Commission. And I would say it was very nice of them to say thank you, but I think we need to tell them thank you. Alan Slavin, Vice Chair, Renee Griffin, Secretary Francis Cobb, Teresa Dorsey, Randall Pittman, and Eddie Upshaw, and John Colpepper, Chairman, you guys did a wonderful job, Randy.
I agree.
And one last thing, Mr. Kingsley, when the meeting is over, we adjourn, come up, voice your question regarding the cell phone tower, please.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, appreciate the commission for all that y'all have done. The Historic Commission's done a wonderful job, been super active for, you know, prior years it went dormant, we got some new people involved and new energy, and y'all have done just a great job. Also, want to reiterate and thank everyone that got out and voted for T-Splash, and so makes a major impact on our community, and it will, you'll see the results very quickly of the amount of miles of roads that we'll be able to pave, and the improvements to our road system, and it definitely takes pressure off of our general funds, so we don't have to use money from the general fund to pave our roads. We've got 674 miles of road, so that's a lot of road paving, and we've got over five, a little over 500 miles still to go, so thank you for that.
Mr. Chair, I forgot. Congratulations to Mr. Randy Pittman, Citizen of the Year.
Oh.
Oh, wow.
We need a speech.
Yeah, come on, Randy, give us a little something.
That's great.
That is, that's wonderful.
They got my speech last night.
So if you want to get Randy's speech, you're going to have to watch the rerun on UCTV on Facebook. He was honored last night on UCTV, what, 9 o'clock? Yeah, so I'll go back and watch that. Congratulations.
And we do have a need for executive session, personnel and real estate.
Okay, so we do have a need for executive session, so we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
A second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We do stand adjourned for executive session, and we will return after executive session. Okay, it is 8:39 on November the 9th, 2023. We just finished our executive session. There's no further action to come before this board, so we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good work, guys.
Good work, everybody.